Okay, we gotta be out of here by ten, okay?
I know.
Five.
That's right, first line, first line at five, so.
We are going to go ahead and call the city council meeting to order. I am Sherri Bingham, I am the mayor, and it is January twenty-third, twenty twenty-five. So we are going to have a pledge of allegiance by council member Fowers, and then the reverence by council member Wilcox.
Okay, everyone place that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in this world with liberty and justice for all.
Our kind heavenly Father, we're grateful for the freedoms we enjoy in this community we live in. We ask a special blessing on those who suffer from any kind of loss or elements, bless them. Thank you for our first responders, bless them as they protect our freedoms and our community. We give thanks to the, pray that we'll have a productive meeting and that we'll be able to do what's in the best interest of the citizens of the city and say this name is Christ.
Thank you. Okay, so there are just a couple of things on the agenda. One thing that we need to do, last time on our meeting, we were not aware that we needed to make a motion on the audit, and so that was not an agenda item. So we are going to make this a legal item, that it should be having it on our agenda. So this was the approval of the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five audit. So if I could have someone make a motion to approve that audit that was presented in our last meeting.
I'd like to make a motion that we tabled the audit, the twenty-four, twenty-five audit.
Table it from something different from what was...
For further review.
Well, so she presented it last time, you know, when she came, and we actually made a motion last time, even though it wasn't on our agenda to motion it. So I just wanted to make sure we had it on an agenda to motion it, because you actually made a motion and approved this at our last meeting.
So then, so why is it on the beginning?
Well, because we haven't had it listed on an agenda. So just for all of our record keeping, just to make sure we have something, because on our agenda last time, I wasn't aware that we needed to make a motion for that. And can we just, in fact, we had asked, and then she just told us that night that we needed to have a motion. So we have everything in our minutes, on our agendas, so yeah, it's already been approved.
So who made that motion last day? We can't remember the last day.
I did.
So can we just...
That's true. Well, table what? Since we did it last week, it was on the agenda, that we heard Cam come up and said we had a motion on it.
Yeah, it wasn't on our agenda.
Um, talk about the motion, the approval of FY twenty twenty-four, twenty-five audit.
Okay, the motion was made by council member Wilcox. Is there a second?
All certain.
Second made by council member Hill. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, the next thing then is a discussion and a motion. So this meeting was called by two city council members. And I'm not really certain why we're having a meeting at four o'clock today when everything that we talked about with this was going to be at our next meeting. So is there Bryce or Ryan, do you want to lead the discussion as to why you want to have this meeting today in the afternoon?
So I'll start.
Okay.
Um, back on January second, we had a city council meeting. And in that meeting, um, a motion was made by myself to approve three planning commission members, with the condition that, um, in our next city council meeting, that was to be held on January sixteenth, that we would discuss and pass a ordinance to increase the number of commission members from five to seven. With those terms, we were to be given two additional names of the four additional, um, city, city community members that were interviewed. So we needed two additional names out of the four people to conclude the seven-member commission. In addition, um, I think the motion included, um, a discussion or consent amongst the city council to set the terms of those commission members, so that we could have a staggering of the planning commission, that we wouldn't have, you know, three and then two and so forth, that we would stagger that. So, so the motion was made to conditionally approve those three commission members pending, um, our meeting on the sixteenth, having those items on the agenda. Well, on the sixteenth, despite multiple attempts and requests to have that put on the agenda, it was only put on the agenda on January sixteenth as a discussion item instead of a motion item. And so, um, it's been delayed and passed on and overlooked and whatever for several weeks now. And so in order to, um, perform the action that was requested on January sixth or second, we determined that we should meet today to get the ball rolling on what should have happened last week. And so, uh, we would like to discuss the ordinance increasing the number of planning commission members from five to seven, um, that we've as typed up. And, um, have a discussion about that and what we should add or take away from that ordinance.
Okay, so, um, I could just make a clarification on what he said. So I know last time it was discussed about what was actually said with the motion, that everyone approved the minutes, and so if you will go back to your minutes, it actually says what the motion was that council member Hill made. Um, if you go back and listen to it word for word, it was never a condition. So what was actually said, if you go back and listen to the meeting, so this was unputting you in the right. So based on our discussion in our work meeting, I make a motion to approve the three planning commission members as recommended by Mayor Bingham. And if you want to listen to this, it's in minute twenty-seven oh two. And also a resolution or request for resolution to change our city code to a seven-member planning commission instead of five in two weeks, and that's our resolution.
That was redirected by Reed.
And then Reed went on and said, it has to be an ordinance, not a resolution. And you said, excuse me, thank you, I appreciate that. Also terms of planning commission are yet to be determined by city council to make them more... And you said, what's the word? And I said, staggered.
Staggered.
And then Ryan said staggered, rather than three members one year and two members one year. So, um, all these decisions need to be determined by the council in two weeks. And then Bryce, this is at minute twenty-eight oh five. Can I add to that motion too? If we are going to appoint and do that and change the whole scope of our commission, I think we ought to renew Sheldon's terms. Brian? Yeah, we are going to have to talk about everyone's terms, the three new appointees and two more. We are going to have to determine all of their terms. And Bryce said, that's what I'm saying, they are going to retain their seats. And Ryan said, so our current city code doesn't allow us to do that. Their terms expired two days ago, so they expired two days ago, so they expired. And you have to reappoint the commissioners to a new term, whether they are current or not. To do that would violate the current code. And, and so I know last time in our meeting, it was said how it was a condition that was placed, but, but it wasn't. And if you went to the minutes, which everyone ended up approving, um, and if you go back to our minutes, and in the minutes, there was a note that said, council member Wilcox added in the motion that he wanted Commissioner Severn and Commissioner Greener to be retained in the next meeting. Council member Hill stated that it would be against code, that they would need to be reappointed. And in our minutes, it said, council member Hill motioned to approve the three planning commission members recommended by Mayor Bingham and a request of ordinance change to assume seven-member quorum instead of five at the next city council meeting, as well as the member terms, the member terms be determined to make them staggered.
So that didn't happen.
So, right, and I think what we're missing here is the words. So based on our discussion in our work meeting, and I can play that work meeting for you right now.
Sure. No, that's okay. So, so then we just...
It said, you say to me, so if we bring those other two on, you are okay voting for the three today, Debbie.
Well, so in, in the work meeting, I remember talking about...
Also, you forgot your comment here, and that's on record too, stating you would do that at the next meeting.
Yes, yes.
You did not include that.
So I should explain a little bit then, like we meant from last time. In a work meeting, things that are discussed in a work meeting cannot be voted upon, and we've already established that. Because yes, you are absolutely correct. In the work meeting, I said, I have no problem with seven members. I have no problem with bringing Sheldon back on. And Dell, and I believe it was Bryce, but for sure Dell said, we are not making negotiations here. That was something that was said. And when it was brought about having to bring those two, Ryan made the motion, but we had, or made the comment, we've had four other people applied. Do you remember making that? So we have four other people that applied that should be in consideration for those additional two. It should not have just been automatically determined in our work meeting who the additional two members were going to be. You know, just for clarification, I absolutely are in favor of seven members. In January sixteenth, I was the one that brought up, let's have seven members. So I'm not against seven members. I know that discussion has gone on, that I am trying to purposely delay this. I am not. And Reed and I, we've talked about this. I misunderstood. He called me on the day after. We were talking about planning commission members. He said about having a public hearing. I thought he meant have a public hearing for planning commission members. He meant have a public hearing for Title X, Chapter Eight. I spoke to a lot of other people. I've spoken to Reed since about this. You are correct. Legally, if it's not a land use issue, you do not have to have a public hearing. Best practice though, and what we have tried to do, and Debbie, you know, you commented, I haven't always had public hearings. I went back and listened to my entire year. One time we did, and that's when we were correcting something that you had found, like it said, the number was wrong, that it had to do with city council. Best practice though, I've been advised all year by Reed to do a public hearing. So that's what I was going by. Not we're trying to stop, we're going to have seven members, that was agreed upon. There are going to be, two more names are going to be presented. Those two names are going to come from those four people that additionally have applied, because that's what we talked about in our work meeting. At the end of our last meeting, we decided, okay, our next meeting, that we were going to have a public hearing. We were going to go through all of Title X, Chapter Five, Chapter Eight specifically. That was going to be done, and we were going to do that. It was going to be voted upon, even though Reed has mentioned that sometimes not best practice to have a public hearing involved, but we decided we would do that. And then I would have two names, adding those four, correct? And, and one of those being Sheldon, because that's what we had talked about in our work meeting.
Table, let's, let's go ahead and move this one. So that's all history, modern.
Well, we'll know it's exactly what happened.
So that's fine, but we're, we're gonna move this along.
Look, one thing I can say that I feel I need to get off my chest is, if that hadn't been said to me before our meeting, I would not have voted the way that I did.
Yes, and I, and I told you, Debbie, before the meeting, I would vote, we agree Sheldon back. But we couldn't do it at that meeting because it wasn't on our agenda, and we're trying to...
Well, it should have been on the sixteen.
Well, okay, but, but...
So I, I, I'm in favor, let's, let's move on.
Sure, let's move on, yeah.
So if I can help you, Ben, thanks for all your comments shared, appreciate that. So, um, just to lay a little bit of groundwork on, on the city council, so I'm gonna quote from state code as well, it's Cooper Code. Just to give everybody a scope of what our responsibility is. It's not something that we're trying to force, it's, it's our responsibility. Says, I'm just gonna, just to mention, the powers of the municipal government and the Hooper City are vested in a council consisting of six members, none of which is the mayor. The council is the legislative body of the city and exercises legislative powers to perform the legislative duties and functions of the city and may adopt rules, regulations, not inconsistent with the dispatching for the efficient administration, organization, operation, conduct, and business of the city. Now, now I'm gonna go to, uh, state code, which talks about establishing a planning commission. It says, each municipality shall, not in ordinance, establish a planning commission. The ordinance shall define the number and terms of the members, and if the municipality chooses alternate members, the mode of appointment, the procedures for filing vacancies and removal from office, the authority of the planning commission, the rules of order and procedures for use by the planning commission in a public meeting, and other detail relating to the organization and procedures of the planning commission. So what we are doing today, the purpose of this meeting, is we're gonna go ahead and fulfill our duty by ordinance, and we are gonna establish the seven-member planning commission, which we have out here, and we can discuss. There's a agreement, Brandon did a great job, and we're gonna add a couple, a little bit of verbiage to it, and we're gonna vote on it and, uh, get that done, because that's our responsibility and our duty per ordinance. So I don't know who wants to go over this. I have, we have what you, you gentlemen prepared. There's a couple modifications that, um, we would like to do. There's a whereas, and I'm gonna give this to you. There is an additional whereas, uh, the council would like to ensure a balanced and consistent method of appointment for members of the commission.
Which section are you under, right?
This is, this is a whereas, it's not in there. These are things that we...
Oh, you're adding on?
We are adding on. Uh, so if you wanna go down to ten dash five B dash two, appointment and terms of the office. We're gonna, the verbiage will be... The mayor, we did it. I did it.
The county?
The mayor, the mayor and the city council shall separately recommend for appointment the members of the commission subject to a majority vote in the city council. Each appointee shall be voted on separately. And then in that same set, uh, subheading, we add a six, a number six. Newly appointed members of the commission shall be sworn in during the same city council meeting in which they are approved and appointed. And I think these changes are gonna clarify some of the, the hiccups that we've had in the past in appointing and voting on. Obviously, there was a big problem in the last planning commission, as far as when they got appointed, and it was, was not done correctly. So we're gonna solve those problems because it's our duty to do that. And those are the changes that we recommend, um, that we would like to vote on and put this ordinance into effect. And, uh, is anyone, anyone like to add to that?
I think it's worth noting, um, how some of our surrounding cities appoint their planning commission as well. Roy's City, Far West City, Sunset City, we've investigated and, you know, looked at how they do their, uh, procedures. And, uh, do you wanna share with us a couple of those?
So here's, here's, uh... The city has, they have, they have the ability to cater to what works for them. They just can't make it less than state code. They can add to it, and some of them have really added to it. Roy's, for example, this is, the planning commission shall consist of seven members to be appointed by the mayor and city council from residents of the city. Uh, Sunset City, the planning commission shall consist of eight members to be appointed by the mayor and the city council from duly qualified electors of the city. And Far West, the city council is an open, in an open meeting, shall select the new members of the commission with due consideration of the recommendations from the interview process. So we have two, there was more, but I thought these suffice two that, uh, involve both the mayor and the city council. And there's one that, uh, is just the city council. So I think, I think what we're trying to do is establish, uh, a foundation where we can work more fully as a team and as a council, instead of just one-sided. Because she might have a name that might agree with and might not, and same with you. You might not like one that, that we appoint. But I think what it does is it brings uniformity, it brings consistency. We're not gonna have these problems we've had in the past, and, uh...
So there've been problems in the past? I guess that's my question.
Well, you tell, you tell me.
Well, that's what I'm asking. So Ryan, you've been on the city council now for nine years. You reached your bed on the city council for three years. Have you ever done this before, brought this, to try to take away?
I think, I think timing, we're not taking away anything. We're not taking away anything.
Well, if you read the wording, the mayor shall appoint the members of the commission. And now for the way you're wording, which I'm curious, if you, if all of city council had this, and one thing you forget, I am also a member of the city council.
Yes, you are.
We are a six-member city council.
That's correct.
But you didn't give this to myself or to either of our attorneys, that the rest of you all have it. You just... Well, even if you just, even if you just got it, did you just get it today?
I, I printed it out and had it...
Today? Then we see this...
It doesn't matter. It doesn't matter.
Yes, it does matter. Yes, yes, it does matter, because...
This has been ongoing for about two weeks since we had the same information available two weeks ago, or last week, when we were supposed to...
So if you did, why have, why is this the first time we're seeing this? And this is a concern.
You know what? Um, I think we've made adjustments. When you do your Title X and when you do that, are there gonna be changes, like during the meeting? Probably.
Not that we know of.
Oh, that could be.
Well, there, there shouldn't be. I mean, that, that's the thing. And Brad, and you, do you have some comments on this, or Reed?
Well, I mean, as far, as far as a discussion and a motion, it's not unheard of to make edits to... I mean, that's happened many, many, many times. We have something that we've written up, we've provided, there's discussion. There might be a word or something that's changed, that's happened. So I'm not gonna say, you know, cannot do that. Um, as to these changes, I think the only question I have, I'm just thinking out loud a little bit, the whereas, I don't think that's an issue. The last one, probably a good thing, that they get sworn in right at the meeting when they get, uh, appointed at, is an issue with that. Uh, the only one that, that Reed and I both, I think, agree on is that the second one, whether that would require, um, either the majority vote of the council plus the mayor or a unanimous vote of the council. The only reason I say that is, in the code, the state code, you know, you have certain responsibilities that the mayor can, can do or has. And if you're gonna change by taking away or adding to those, you're able to do that. The council can do that. That's very much legal in the code, to take away or add to the mayor's power. Because however, that's kind of a big deal to have to do, it's done by way of a process of either majority of the council plus the mayor voting to do whatever you want to do. Or if the mayor votes against that action, you can still do it, but it would be a unanimous vote of the council. So, so that issue, that middle one, is the only one that causes me to wonder if you need to have, if it falls under that part of the UTA code where you can still do it, but you would either have to have the mayor plus the majority or a unanimous of the council. Because it is changing from mayor appoint with advice of consent to a different process, which I'm not saying is a good or bad one. It's a different process though, where you're involved. So that one in the middle is the only one I wonder about, if you could do here without having Lisa, unless you have a majority plus the mayor. That doesn't mean you couldn't do that at another meeting.
Yes, we could do it at the next meeting if Lisa's here.
That particular one. The other ones, I don't, they're immaterial, the whereas, and the, the other one, uh, those don't make changes by taking the power away or anything. I don't know.
What do you say, the middle one? Do you mean ten dash five B dash two, number one?
Yeah, yeah, just, just that, because it just changes the process that we've done a little bit. And you may very well vote to do it, I'm not saying, I just wanna make sure we don't run afoul of that state code where we gotta do it that way.
So we would need to wait to do that part in our next meeting. Do you still want to go ahead and change this from the five to the seven in this meeting? So you can approve the ordinance with those other two, just not that one? And then I guess at our next meeting, you can have this back on the agenda to put that as well. But we would need to have everyone here.
She's not maybe on the shelves.
Oh, she's not. I didn't know she was listening or not, but I just...
Yeah, I'm here.
Oh, she's there.
All right.
Okay, then that was my only concern. I didn't know she was there, so, yeah.
So I'm, I'm in favor of approving it. I mean, this, this is my opinion of how we have it written. I don't know if I'm dressed to agree. So it looks like we need to...
I, I would like a chance to even be able to look through it first, because I also am going to be, be voting on this. So should we go make copies? Reed and Bradley could also have a copy. And we really do need to have things in advance. If you have this probably sooner than today, you should have sent us a copy. Maybe you just thought you should be here. Maybe all of you just received this today. Did you? Today. But it would have been nice if it would have, it should have really been in the packet. That's what we try to give the twenty-four hour notice with. So maybe Bryce, you didn't have this done, but as it says, it should be your twenty-four hour notice and we didn't see this. So, um...
I mean, we can always call another meeting next Thursday if we need to.
Well, is there any reason why we can't just do it on our sixth meeting? Is there a reason this had to be done today or next week? And it can't be on the sixth meeting? When we're approving our Title X anyway? What was the reasoning? Well, did not, is, how long does it take before it goes into effect?
You can decide that yourselves. Uh, normally, if you don't do anything, it's twenty days after the partnership. Put it on the website. But if you change that, you can change it to whatever you want. If you reduce it, uh, if you say it's an emergency situation, you can, if there is an emergency. I would think it'd be important to get those people on and appointed and approved and so forth before the next meeting. Uh, we're gonna talk about that exactly next week, uh, when you look at Title Four, Title Ten. My suggestion is going to be that that's been discussed now for four months, and lots of notice, lots of discussion, and you pass it on that day after the public hearing and make it effective meeting.
Yeah.
Uh, because I think we're being comprised of state law. So, uh, that's up to you.
I was, I was just wondering, because we talked about doing, doing this, then doing, having the people voted in after we did this, because sure, it'd just be ineffective for us to be able to do that.
No, you can appoint them, and then they wouldn't take their position until the ordinance is passed.
So it'd be twenty days?
No.
No, okay, so we can have it effective right then?
It could be two days.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it can't be after the meeting, because they do have the partnership. And I don't, but that, you can do that the next day, of course, if...
Or the least on Monday.
Yeah, Monday.
Because Morgan doesn't work on Fridays.
I don't know if we've got everybody. I mean, Debbie, I see that.
Lucy's, yeah, Lucy's here, we can...
Where are you guys?
We can make the motion. Working on the motion.
Well, I, I could feel more comfortable, we, we least would have had a chance. Our legal counsel would have had a chance, at least 24 hours. That's why we send out packets. So legal counsel has a chance to review this, we all have a chance to review this.
I think it's only like two sentences that we've had, maybe 15 or so.
But if we approved on the sixth, I don't see what your, what the emergency was. If they're approved on the sixth, the next planning commission meeting's not till the 13th. If we approve it on the sixth, you have like that following Monday, which will be what, the 10th? So everything will be approved.
So the issue was, we won't do it last week. That was the motion. Motion was made to have it happen last week, and it wasn't, that's why we're here today.
Yeah. Well, and again, well, it doesn't do any good, because when we explain what happens, you say that's history, but it is factual. And when Morgan, it was either a call or a text, and said about doing a public hearing, I talked to you about a public hearing, talked to you about a public hearing. No one put up red flags about we couldn't have a public hearing. So I came to the meeting fully expecting we were fine with that. I hadn't talked to you, Bryce, I hadn't talked to you, Dale, but I've talked to others, and it wasn't, or, but Morgan did. Morgan did with you, and I had with Lisa. So as of our meeting last time, when it ended, it was, and you can, and it was quoted, I think, like three times. I think maybe you had said it, Bryce, then I repeated it, then Dale, you asked again if this was right when we were doing.
But now, what did I ask?
Um, about, about on the, on their next meeting, if we were going to have the, um, we were going to approve the ordinance to change from five to seven. That was it. We were going to do the public hearing, approve from the five to seven, and two planning commission members were going to be appointed.
That's what I asked, what were our arguments? That's, at the end of the meeting, it said, like, we didn't have any direction.
Right, Morgan, like, three times. So if you go back and listen to the meeting, you can hear it. If you get the minutes as soon as they're done, and I don't know if Jamie probably hasn't had a chance to do those yet, she maybe does. But that was decided upon multiple times. That's why I guess I was surprised when I was informed that we were having this meeting today. They're, they're going to be approved. I'm not against seven. I'm in favor of seven. And like you said, we had four people identified to choose from. So it's not even like we have to go back and redo applications. Three of those are returning ones, which will give you the experience that you've asked for. One of those wasn't, it is a very, very capable person. So I don't think there's any of those four that are even questioned at all.
So I still have one question. Will all that happen before the first meeting, first commission meeting in February?
Okay. All of that will happen according to our meetings, February 6th.
Because the, the reason I ask that, because I listened in on the pre-meeting for the last commission meeting. And even though it was tried, they were trying to make it clear that there'd been a motion made that this would be done and reviewed on January 16th. And you stood up and you said...
I had sat down, I actually came and said...
Well, you, you were standing, and you said, "This will not happen until February and possibly March."
Mm-hmm. And what explanation did I give? I said, "We're going to do a public hearing, so if we can get the public hearing done on February 6th." At that time, I wasn't sure, because Reed had said before, "It's usually not a good idea to do, like, a motion and prove the same night," or have a public hearing. But he later clarified we could. At that time, I didn't know that.
I, no, I don't... See, I confused that. At that point, it was Friday the fourth. If you had done the notice the next Monday, you could have done it at the next meeting, because that wasn't done.
But we didn't have an ordinance was the, was the problem.
Didn't need an ordinance, you just need to say the notice, what you're going to do.
Well, anyway, but usually you don't do that at the same meeting, correct? But you said we can. We can do that at the same meeting. And he clarified that at our last meeting, correct? That we can do that at the same meeting. So that's what it was, that we were doing it at the same meeting. So I didn't know if we could do that at the same meeting, or then if we would have to wait till our next meeting to do that. And he clarified that at our last meeting. And then I didn't know when, according to that, we could have those two names there ready to be appointed. There, there is a time process. I mean, there really is, and we're kind of shooting past all that process.
There is, there is a time and process, and, you know, I sit and I think about things like this, and when that motion was made, I didn't approve it. Right, I was the one that did not, but yet I still honored it, because the majority did on Ryan's motion. But yet now, are we only, are we only like recognizing part of the motion? Or just, we kind of pick and choose what part of the motion we'll, we'll accept and not accept? Because I, as a council member, even though I voted against it, I have, I, I accept all of it and respect that, because the major, the majority voted for that.
Yeah. Yeah. And I am committed to making sure we do things right. There's some things we have to correct, um, some things that will be corrected at our next meeting, even some people that need to be sworn in that have not been sworn in. We will get all that corrected at our next meeting, when we swear in these two new people. The error that was made, um, those people should have been sworn in at the end of our city council meeting, they, they were not. But we have other planning commission members that have not been sworn in, and we will swear them in at our next meeting. Um, so that, that will occur at the same time.
Um, I think I'm ready to make a motion. So, um, I'll go ahead and make a motion for ordinance number zero, or O dash two zero two five dash zero one, an ordinance increasing the number of the members of the Hooper City Planning Commission from five to seven. And my motion is, the entirety of this document minus the one sentence that says, "The mayor and city council so separately recommend for appointment members of the commission shall be to a majority of the city council," on the condition that this will be on our February 6th meeting, and it will be voted on. And this document will be in effect, uh, no later than January 28th, 2025 at 4:00 p.m. And then once, once this, once we vote on, uh, the addition, um, that will take effect immediately as well.
Okay, right, I think Reed, you had a question on the motion. Was there something...
We, so we can vote, all five of us are on here, Lisa's on Zoom still, so we can vote...
We can vote the entirety if you ask for it.
I think we should just vote today on the entire, on the entire, um, ordinance.
And amend my motion, or add to it?
Well, just realize you're setting a precedent, that at any given time, someone can bring something in that we haven't seen, that our legal counsel hasn't seen.
Then we'll stick with, we'll stick with Bryce's motion.
Yes, I would feel, I would feel more comfortable with your first motion to approve this with, minus that one sentence.
So to be clear, we talked about the version of the ordinance that Reed put together, with the two additions, the extra whereas, and the point, the numbers at the same meeting, that they get approved, right, with those two additions? But the, the one that discussed the, the way that you nominate and put in, we'll hold back on it, and the condition is that goes on to the next meeting.
Do you know, um, one thing we have not talked about yet was the staggering of the terms. So that was something that is in the ordinance, and we have not talked about that yet. So I would think before, if that's all right, before we make the motion, because there's been some different things that we talked about with that. Um, I think this motion, or this ordinance said, um, about there would never be more than two at a time, and we, and one thing with that is, then we will be appointing a new planning commission member every single year. So you would, there would never be more than two. Yeah, yes.
At any one year.
But you're still appointing new ones every year. So you'd have two appointed one year, two appointed one year, two appointed one year, and then one. So just be aware of that. Every year, we will be replacing...
Either two or one.
Either two or one, and that every single year. Out of seven, out of seven, that, that makes sense. Because we will still have five base with, um, knowledge. And if you wanted to do it and have three, two, and two, you still always have four based with knowledge, but you wouldn't be appointing someone new every single year. Because then you're always in the training process. You could at least have two years where you weren't training someone. If you did it three, two, and two...
Well, I think the way, it doesn't specifically say how we're going to do it. It just says that in a way, that no one year will be more than two up for replacement.
Yes.
So it's not, we didn't specify, it's not specified how the staggering will take place. That's still up for, um, discretion, and it's not...
Well, no, but if you never have more than two at a time with seven, that's going to be two, 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 and one. That's the only way it could be. So that's why I'm saying, if you would decide to do it three, two, and two, then you, every year, we wouldn't have to be replacing someone, which might make it a little easier than...
Three, two, and two, that, but if they're four-year terms, I'm not sure that...
No, we're talking about members, not their terms. So you'd have like three people, two people, or two people, correct?
But they're four-year terms, I mean, the people are putting in, they'll be in there for four, they'll be four-year terms. Not on how you can divide that by three.
Well, no, you're not, you're not dividing it by three, you're dividing it by numbers. So if you have seven planning commission members, and you have one year, three are replaced, the next year, two are replaced, the next year, two are replaced, you always have four planning commission members that are returning, always four. The majority is always returning. With seven, if one year you replace two, the next year you replace two, the next year you replace two, the next year you replace one, the next year you're back replacing two.
I don't, I don't, I don't think with as large of a, of a, uh, commission that having two new coming in will be that big a deal. Um, I, I, I think you'll still have a five-member base.
Yeah, we'll always have five.
There will always be five.
Yeah, it would either be four or five. My point was just appointing someone new every year. Every year, you're going through the training process, because you will always have someone new every single year.
But that's just a couple of them. And I, I think that, my per, myself personally, I think that, you know, and the way that we stagger and modify some initial terms and stuff, I think that, um, that's probably going to be our best, our best bet, and the best way that we can stagger. That's just me personally.
Okay, and another thing too, that needed to be, um, probably discussed then? So if we appoint, so we have five people on there right now that have, already have terms. Two of them that have been there longest can't be, they, their terms are already established, and they have two more years.
Right.
We have those three new that we appointed, and at the time, part of that was we would figure out their terms. But we probably need to figure that out before we do the two, because if, if by chance we have four people that applied, and one of those was a new person, and like Reed recommended, it's probably not a good idea to give a new person only one year. And we're going to have to have some that are probably have to only get a one year of these two new ones that we do in order so we stick, keep this staggered. Unless if you wanted to give them like a three-year, but that maybe won't work if you do the two, 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 and one.
I think everybody's been working on some ideas, and we could bring them together at work meeting, um, and kind of go over, and then we could decide at that time.
Okay, well, yeah, sounds good. Okay.
So back to the motion. We're approving the motion, kind of almost to be continued the next time, to finalize the motion.
Yeah, basically, you're adjusting it, you are, so you noticed it up that way, so you, you're, you're definitely changing it to seven. The whereas, I think, is, is okay, that little addition. And then the last point, I think, is immaterial to even issue, so I think you can go on.
Now, I wanted any significance, it's the one that you're waiting a few weeks on, and, and so you need to make sure the notice the next time for that one indicates that you're changing the method of composing the planning commission, and then you're going to do it. Uh, on the other hand, if you're planning on doing that, if that's absolutely going to happen, you might want to think about somehow getting some group together to go up the names by next meeting if you want to appoint them.
So, um, do you want to just approve Reed's? And then give us time to read through your additions? And if we're going to be changing it to it next time, or do you still want to? Because we have Reed's ordinance.
I, I think there's a couple of points in there that are still good. I think each point shall be voted on separately. I think that's a valid, a valid point, but...
Was that on one of your where asks at the top?
No, it's not. It's on number one.
Yeah, so that's one that we're going to read.
And I think, I think to avoid any confusion with number six, newly appointed members of the commission shall be sworn in during the same city council meeting in which they are approved and appointed, because...
That, that's a good idea, too.
So, um, no, I don't want to take those off. I want to leave those off.
Okay, so you're saying that first one...
And I would really like to approve all of it, but I, I, I'm going to lead on the council for this, so...
So what was the first one again? I haven't, like you said, I didn't get it recorded.
Do you want, do you want mine?
Sure. Yeah, and council, you might want to have a copy as well.
Yeah, we'll, we'll take this one.
Okay. So the ones we're adding on then is, whereas the council would like to ensure a balanced and consistent method of appointment for members of the commission, correct? Bryce, is in your motion, or whoever makes the motion? And the number six newly appointed members?
Well, part of the, well, part of it, the other one is still in too, what he's talking about.
Yeah, that, that was a little add-on, the sentence, each point each should be voted on separately.
And by the way, you can do that anyway. It doesn't hurt to put any ordinance, but you're the ones voting. So if you want to vote on each one separately, you decide.
Yeah. Okay. Did you get that? There was something in there about a date, so...
Well, just, well, we'll... Effective date, he said, the January 28th. Can I put that in?
Effective date of the ordinance, correct?
We'll just do it immediately.
Well, not, well, no, it can't be till Monday, because you have to give her time to get it.
Don't worry, we're, we'll just leave it January 28th by then. Which would be about a week from when it's supposed to.
Yeah, it's like, yeah, like six days.
Okay, so will you repeat that motion again then? So we have all of that, so she has it down?
Do you want me to do it again? I think you have it.
I've got bits and pieces, but we can, I can listen.
Okay, so, so I'll go ahead and motion, and, um, ordinance number O dash two zero two five dash zero one, it's an ordinance increasing the number of the members of the Hooper City Planning Commission from five to seven members. And, uh, this document, it's in entirety minus ten dash five B dash two, number one, the first sentence. I'm going to read it all out, and that's, that's it. Then, the first sentence will be brought to the city council, uh, as a discussion motion item on the February 6th, city council to be voted on, and to be, uh, the first item on the agenda. First action item.
Yes, because we, we will have...
Action item.
Okay. Okay, a motion was made by council member Rokox. Is there a second? Just...
Can I just amend?
Sure, absolutely.
So, so in two weeks, when we discuss this again, it will be the same ordinance, O dash twenty, twenty-five, dash O one, that we will amend next meeting.
Yes.
And I'll second that motion.
Right, I mean, yeah.
You can do it either way. You can have that same one and amend it, or we can amend it as part of the total amendment to chapter 10, because it's a part of chapter 10.
I think we should just amend it, make it easy.
Well, because then we'd have the public hearing first, rather than the motion, because chapter 10 is on that, so it'd probably be cleaner, maybe just to keep it separate.
Well, I'll second that motion.
Okay, second was made by council member Hill. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, all in favor? Aye.
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 Okay, any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, um, those are the only items on the agenda. Um, citizen comments are next. If there's anybody that has any comment? Okay, seeing no citizen comments, we have a motion for adjournment?
We'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, meeting's adjourned. Thank you.